Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. This is a special evening. Tonight, we have a great commem- you know, commemorative room being put in. Also, it's our first whole meeting, official meeting of the new board. So this is a very special evening. I need approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, a special meeting, May third, twenty twenty-three, and a special meeting minutes for May eighth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Mr. Murba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Tonight, we have some recognitions. Two of our staff members have just been outstanding this year. And the first one is Mrs. Lori Johnson. Lori has done an exceptional job, building upon the foundation of our early childhood program. Her enrollment numbers continue to climb. She has updated the curriculum, classroom furniture, and is spearheading initiative to create an outdoor playground. Mr. Mencken, would you like to make any comments?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Sarver. Not just her good humor, integrity, or intelligence, but she's done a phenomenal job in other aspects with the early childhood education in places like Ottawa and things. So when she came here, it was truly a gift to us in every sense of the word because she was recommended by one of our partner schools. LP was gracious in working with her to get her in the door here, and then she acclimated to the position she's holding now, and that program is just phenomenal. So with that, Mrs. Lori Johnson is a human being and teacher of the highest caliber. Her love and dedication to her craft is present in every aspect of her classroom. The operative word in her philosophy is love. In working with teenagers and imparting to them the wisdom and genuine care that it takes to bring preschoolers out into the world of learning and social interaction, what she has done can only be accomplished through love, love of humanity, love of learning, and love of challenge. In working with Mrs. Johnson, one witnesses is witness to the evolution of the ACC Early Childhood Program has been remarkable. Whether it be in a fully attended cadre of preschoolers or a growing number of requests by high school students she teaches, one clearly sees her program as thriving. This observation fully lives up to the recommendation given to the LP and to LP and the ACC community in getting her here. The recommendation to have a look at this excellent educator came from one of the ACC Partner School admits. That community that recognizes excellence and seeks to help all in the process of continuous improvement scored a direct hit in guiding Mrs. Johnson to LP and then to the ACC. During her tenure at the helm of the Early Childhood Program, she has refocused the program on early childhood education, instituted an internship program, increased enrollment for both students and the preschool age, invigorated donations of learning materials to the program, and has garnered increasing numbers of students to pursue education at the post-secondary level. Additionally, she is currently working on a second level of dual credit for the program, incorporating a playground and partnering with the larger Starred Rock community to develop a home, excuse me, a homegrown teacher program. In all things related to education in her program, Mrs. Johnson has been a tireless advocate. She arrives early, stays late, projects positivity, and collaborates through amiability, all while staying focused on an educational philosophy that brings respect and dignity in learning to the students she serves. She is a phenomenal educator and, more importantly, a phenomenal human being.
And for those of you who do not know, our early childhood program is a ACC program. Mr. Mencken is the director of the ACC. Mrs. Johnson, would you please come forward, meet the board? We have some gift of recognition for you.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you. See you this afternoon, tomorrow afternoon.
Working on that playground.
Congratulations.
So I used to work with this one. I was there when Sammy came in in Ottawa, so, yes.
Her husband keeps me on my toes. Couple people's husbands in this room keep me on my toes.
You know, working with Dwayne, I mean, he can make anybody sound really good. He's good with his words. But it wouldn't be the same if you didn't have Dwayne over there supporting the program and helping and encouraging the positive reinforcement all the time.
Our second recognition tonight is our school resource officer, Nick Martin. Officer Martin has been a great resource in school safety over this year. He has provided Mrs. Lance critical support and guidance as school safety office as transitioned through new leadership. Officer Martin is respected by the students and serves an exceptional role model. And this is for this year, but we can look back previous years during the pandemic years, when we put in all the new initiatives in safety. Mr. Martin was right in the thick of it. He guided us through the entire process.
And I would add to that, Officer Martin is such a calm presence in the office. Anytime that we have to have some conversations about students that are making some core decisions, what I appreciate about Nick is that safety is always first, but he's also very kid-oriented, you know, and really works hard to build relationships with kids. And I think that's just been wonderful, too, to also, I'm going to have a police presence here, but more than than that, it's also about providing such a positive role model for law enforcement for our students. And Nick does a tremendous job providing us guidance as we have looked at improving our safety and security procedures. He's very often my go-to guy. If I have a question in regards to anything related to violations and how it impacts the law, there have been many evenings, late into the evenings, that Nick and I will be on the phone with other members of the team as we're having to address issues that come to our attention. And I never ever not worry about if I have to call Nick, it doesn't matter what time of the day or what time of the night it is, Nick is there, he's present, and he immediately marshals resources to be able to guide our team and to ultimately help me make good decisions. And so, Nick, we're thrilled that you are here, that this has kind of found your niche here, and I certainly hope you're going to continue staying here for as long as you wish to stay here. You know, it makes it that much more meaningful, too, that you're an alum, and there's something to be said about, you know, when our own, stay in the area and come back. So thank you so much.
Officer Martin, please meet the board. Olive, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So our honorees, Mr. Baker, if you'll kind of guide everyone for photos?
Each month, we do the vision spotlight on one of our divisions here at Southwood High School. Tonight, we have the Social Sciences representative and Mr. Troy Woods.
My name is Troy Woods. I'm the Social Science Division Chair. Today, I just want to kind of give you an overview of how we teach our founding documents in our Social Science Division at LP High School. And I want to focus on how we cover the Declaration of Independence in our curriculum and our courses, and how this course aligned was developed by our Social Science Department through, it's called the CLI process, back in 2017. As a division, we met. And what we did is we put together outcomes and components for all of our classes here at LP High School. We looked at what are the key ideas, concepts we want to teach within each class. We align them with the Social Science Goals of the State of Illinois. And so, this is the outcomes and components for one of the units in our U.S. History class. Typically, our students will take the U.S. History class either as sophomores or juniors. And so, the Declaration of Independence is taught not just in our U.S. History class, which you would expect it to be taught in, but our three core classes. So every student is a freshman, takes World History, or as a sophomore, they take World History. And so, we start off with World History and the Enlightenment, and we look at the Enlightenment thinkers, and specifically, we'll look at different individuals and the impact and influence they had on our founding fathers. And so, I'll give you an example. This is a lesson that Kristin Adams uses in her Honors World History class, where she looks at the two different Enlightenment thinkers, Thomas Hobbes and John Locke, and compares their different philosophies on government, and specifically, how Hobbes advocated for a monarchy, and Locke advocated for a democracy. And we'll look at his ideas of natural rights. We'll look at the idea of the social contract. And so, they're getting that foundation there. And they'll talk about the influence that it had on other countries, specifically, the United States. And we'll also talk about the influence it had on the Declaration of Independence, what's written into the Constitution, what's written into our Bill of Rights. Then, as we move on to our U.S. History and Honors U.S. History classes, we look at the Declaration of Independence there in detail as well. And I just want to show you some examples of different activities we do within my class, where we look at the political ideas behind the Declaration of Independence in United States history. So, we'll go back and we'll look at Locke, where Locke's talking about things like life, liberty, and property, and then we compare that specifically to what Jefferson's talking about in the Declaration of Independence, how that's similar. And then, an activity that we'll do in class is we'll have the students rewrite the opening of the Declaration of Independence in their own words, and then discuss about, okay, why did you say it this way? What do you mean by that? And have a good class discussion with that. So, these are two examples of how we look at the Declaration of Independence with the American Revolution. Then, moving on, as we get to the Civil War, we go back to the Declaration of Independence as we look at Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation. We look at his Gettysburg Address, and we connect those documents to the Declaration of Independence. Specifically, we'll look at the opening of the Gettysburg Address and what Abraham Lincoln is referencing when he talks about fourscore and seventy years ago. And nobody knows what a score is, so I have to tell them, that's twenty, and then we'll do the math. And Abraham Lincoln is referencing seventeen seventy-six. What is he talking about with seventeen seventy-six? And we'll tie in those core ideas that he's talking about there, tie it into the Declaration of Independence, and then look at the closing. Why did Lincoln open up with referencing the Declaration of Independence? He closes with, he's talking about this new birth of freedom. How is that connecting there? What's the core? And so, we're not just done with the Declaration of Independence with the revolution. We tie it into the Civil War. We also do that when we look at the Declaration of Sentiments with the Women's Suffrage Movement. So we'll look at it multiple times within the course. And then, we're not done. We go to government. So, within our government curriculum, we look at the roots of our Constitution and the ideas there. And so, this is an activity from Rob Clydesdale's AP Government Class, where this is an AP class where they're diving into documents. They're going to have to analyze documents, interpret documents, and write essays for that. So hopefully, they can pass that AP test in May and get their college credits for it. And so, the Declaration of Independence is the very, one of the very first activities where he throws them into that, where they're reading a document, analyzing it, and then contextualizing it, which is a very key component to the AP courses. But then, in his American Government classes, we're looking at the Declaration of Independence. We're going back and we're looking at Hobbes. We're looking at Locke, and we're doing activities there. We talk about specifically how the Declaration of Independence is a breakup letter between the United States and Britain. And so, he relates that, too. He has his students write a breakup letter from the United States to Britain, saying, why are we breaking up? And it's a really good activity that the kids get into and enjoy. And so, this is an example you can see with the Declaration of Independence. We cover it through our core classes, so it's not just one and done. We're looking at it in World History. We're looking at it in U.S. History. We're looking at it in American Government. Our kids can see how everything is connected. And we just don't do it with the Declaration of Independence. We do that when we study the Constitution. We'll look at it in all three of our core classes. We do that with the Bill of Rights. As a division, Social Science, we meet once a week with PLCs. We look at our outcomes and our goals. We discuss what we're teaching in our classes and how it's going, and we compare that specifically within the PLC for each class. So, all the government teachers, all the U.S. History teachers, all the World History teachers will talk about what they're covering. But then, it crosses everything. So then, we come back together as a division and do the same thing and discuss it. And if we need to change or tweak anything, or get ideas from each other, that's what we do. And so, that's just kind of a little mirror of how we cover things in the Social Science Division. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to present to you. And I guess I'd just like to take this opportunity to say, I feel very honored and privileged to be able to teach Social Science at LP High School. I'm alumni of LP High School. My parents went to LP High School. My children went to and are at LP High School and are coming to LP High School. And I think about all the great teachers I had here, like Joe Skavinsky and Ron Byrd and Dennis O'Keefe. And it's just an honor and privilege to be able to teach at the same school where I had great teachers like that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Troy. Very appropriate topic for tonight's activities. Politics and government.
Yeah.
Public comment? You have any public comments? Under Finance, I need a motion to approve the bills and payroll of Southwood Township High School?
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Murba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the bills for the LP Area Career Center?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the payroll report?
So moved.
Mr. Murba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the financial records as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under Correspondence this evening, we have a thank you from Mrs. April Yudis for the Board of Education's donation to the LP Educational Foundation in memory of her son, Jacob Yudis, and the appreciation, condolences from the entire LP Cavalier family. We also have a thank you card from Yudis' family, the LP Board of Education Administration and staff, for the outpouring of support for their family after the loss of their son and brother, Jacob Yudis. We also got a thank you card from Yudis' family, the LP District Office, for their support and kindness after the loss of their son and brother, Jacob Yudis. We also got a thank you card from the LP Local Six Oh Four Federation of Teachers, the School Board of Education District Office, for all the plans, activities, for the Teacher Appreciation Week. And we also got a thank you letter from Mrs. Kay Rinnery, Library Clerk, the Board of Education Administration, for the annual spring playing celebration, which was last week at Senate Circle. Board and Committee Reports, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Ferrari?
All right, we covered a number of issues Monday at the committee meeting, and I'm going to go over the four items, which are action items on tonight's agenda. First of all, LP Sports Complex Phase Two. As you may recall, last month, we rejected the two tied bids and rebid the project for the construction of the concession stand and press box for the baseball fields. And we split off as a separate item the bathrooms for the soccer field. And we received bids on each, and the committee has recommended the low bid for the large project from the sports complex, the baseball fields. That was from Vissering Construction of Streeter in the amount of one million five hundred seventeen thousand and thirty-four dollars. Further, we recommend the low bid for the soccer field bathroom facilities. That one is from Team and Builders of LaSalle in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And you'll find that on tonight's agenda under item ten point seven. Next, we had the, discussed the auto shop Phase Two renovation and the nurses' office renovation. And you'll see under item ten point nine tonight, we're looking to submit building permit applications for those, as well as the main building entrance door replacement projects. Also, we discussed the stadium concrete repairs. As you may recall, we discussed there's a lot of concrete work that needs to be done at Howard Fellow Stadium, but there are certain items, after a walkthrough, were determined that for safety reasons, those need to be taken care of this summer before next fall's season begins, involving hand railings, stairway treads, things like that. So, we have under item ten point six, we're looking for approval to hire Leginski Cement Finishing Company to do those specific items, which totaled thirty-five thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. Those come in under the amount that are required for us to put it out for bids. And they have done work at the stadium many times in the past, and their work has always been regarded as excellent. So that is a proposal under number ten point six tonight. And the school is looking to purchase a used vehicle, twenty twenty-one Chevy Traverse. It's got about nineteen thousand miles on it, and they're getting an extended warranty. Total cost of the vehicle is thirty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars twenty-six cents. This is from Pournet Dodge of Peru, and you will see that on tonight's agenda under ten point three. And all of these have been recommended by the board. We discussed several other items, as you can see, on the materials in your packet. If anybody has any questions about those other items, please feel free to ask, and either I or Dr. Roblesky can answer your questions on them.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. Finance Committee, Mr. Murba?
Yeah, the Finance Committee met on Monday. We reviewed the monthly financials that you saw in your packet, and we're eighty-three point three percent of the way through the year. And it's hard to look at the summaries and stuff to understand where we're at at budget, because there's some skewing there with the working cash movement that we had to do earlier. That'll be cleared up with the amended budget. But we are right at our revenue sources and our expenditures are under budget. So that's the main thing that came out of that. We reviewed the cash and investments as of April thirtieth, and cash flow, nothing out of the ordinary there. So we talked about that. Then, we also talked about the two thousand twenty-two tax year extension, and we provided an update from the administration on that. I'll just say that the EAV came in very close to what we estimated, and it results in a two percent or two cent reduction of our rate. That's, in the end, that's what it ends up being. We did discuss the action item ten point two, which is the amendment to the district budget, which we also recommend, and it's an action item, to have that displayed. We talked about four bid recommendations, which are action items ten point eight and ten point seven regarding several different items that we also recommended approval of. We got a brief LP Sports Complex Phase Two general update, and it's really good news. They're really going quickly out there. They've only missed six days of work due to weather to this point. So they're really, really going quickly out there. We also discussed the vehicle purchase recommendation, action item ten point three, and recommended that, and the stadium concrete proposal, action item ten point six. Then, we also recommended that this go to the agenda, action item ten point one eight, which is the temporary summer workers, the recommendation from the administration. We approved that. And the call system, the final site, website, and all call system, which is action item ten point five, we're recommending that also. Other items we talked about was the potential, we're looking at different items for time clocks and things like that. And then, one item that didn't get on the agenda, but is on our agenda for the committee, but it's on the agenda for the board meeting, is the technology purchase for Chromebooks and the accessories. And I'll just say, I don't know that the committee recommends it, but I personally recommend that.
Me, too.
All right.
Yep.
And that's it.
There are any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Murba. Policy Committee, Mrs. Alcorn?
We met and reviewed one item on the agenda, was the press release. It was a lot of changes and not anything new. And so, the board is, the committee is recommending that you approve ten point twelve press policies.
Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Alcorn. Administrator Reports, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Roblesky?
Thank you, Mr. Sarver. The, we received our annual renewal for our property casualty workers' compensation. And fortunately, we're going to see a rate increase from where, from last year's rates. We are expecting to see a thirteen percent increase in our rates. So for the combined package for property casualties, whereas our workers' compensation, we're going to be increasing from two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars to two hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. And as I've kind of talked to our consultants as well, and some of the other districts that are in the cooperative, you know, it's been a kind of a trend that they're seeing, particularly in workers' compensation. You know, there have been some unfortunate, you know, injuries, not only within the, in the cooperative, and we've had some staff members here, too, you know, that have had some accidents. And part of one of the things that we do with that, too, through our Buildings and Grounds Department, is we make sure that we have a monthly check-in with our field service rep from the, from our insurance company that does ongoing presentations. And we made some changes in our collective bargain agreements, where we're providing safety-toed shoes for all the employees. So some examples that we've put in place to be able to limit our costs. We've also had some insurance claims on the property. We've also had some insurance claims on the property side as well. Some environmental, well, actually, that was not approved by the, by the insurance. But we've had some, some other damage to the, to the facility. Some lightning strike to one of our air handling units on the roof that we're seeing the impacts of those claims. We had our unannounced kitchen inspection with the LaSalle County Health Department. We had, we had, we had one finding this time. And the, we received a, an area of improvement is we have, we had a mop that was sitting in the bucket with the water. And so that is, that's a violation, I learned. And so our department's already fixed that in terms of having a, some equipment in there from the air dry. So that way they're, they're, we're not having the mop sitting in, 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 in water. What I appreciate about these though is that you, there's always something that they find. But beyond that though, everything else was just, we, we had 100% on all the other components of our food, our, our food temperature checks and the procedures. Quite frankly, in terms of the food preparation, the storage of the food, and the quality of the equipment, you know, so in those respects too. I would also consider probably more, more central components to the, to maintain the safe environment. And I know Mrs. Cushing will be speaking on this, but I'll, just as a reminder, it's graduation tomorrow. And for my part of this is if I have the board members arrive to the district office between 6 o'clock and 6:15 tomorrow. And we will be in Howard Fellow Stadium. The last item, we have one FOIA request from this last month. It was a request from the University of Kentucky that was requesting information on student directoring information. We consulted with legal counsel, and Walt was able to kind of guide us on what we're able to respond to. And we met our response within the designated five days. So all I have is our questions.
Thank you. Principal's Report, Mrs. Cushing.
Steve Porshadow, we'll be talking about graduation, certainly. That's been the whole focus for the last month of my life. We've certainly done our due diligence in preparing the students. We had a practice today. We practiced for indoors and outdoors, just in case the, the weathermen are wrong with their forecast. But it does look like sunny skies, so hopefully we are, are outside. We will be graduating 236 students this year. So the class of 2023 is, is going to have quite a few students. The setup will be the same, just to, to let you know, as in years past. I know we have a new board member. But we will be sitting on the stage at the 20-yard line at the north end of the field. And we'll go through, share our students' names, and sort of have that, that typical traditional ceremony this year. We also have had our senior award ceremony that happened at the end of April. And we were able to give away over 50 scholarships to students and many, many thousands of dollars to our students. And so I'd just publicly like to thank all of those donors. They're extremely generous every single year and very much appreciative of that generosity. Something else I'd like to mention is our end of the year celebration, which will be held on Monday, May 22nd. We're looking forward to honoring our retirees, as well as celebrating all of our staff accomplishments in terms of, you know, their favorite award is Perfect Attendance Award, believe it or not. So we'll be going over that along with all of our other awards for them. Just to highlight some of the work of my associate principals, Mr. Gibson has been very busy with the AP tests. We have 300, well, around 320 AP tests that we were able to give this year, which is excellent. He has had to, to work very hard at making a lot of accommodations here at the end for all the different schedules for sports and, and accommodating those. But we're going to have some record high numbers this year, so I'm very pleased with that. Also, I'd highlight Ms. Lance. She has wrapped up all of our safety drills for the school year and submitted that paperwork. And she and I are already working on getting registration set for next year. So I mean, look forward to that, the first week of August there. Other than that, I don't have anything else to share unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cushing. Director of Activities and Athletics, Mr. Brazil is not here this evening. His report is in your packets. Director of the Area Career Center, Mr. Minkin. Before you speak, I want to say thank you for our mugs.
Oh, yeah.
Very appreciative.
I, I've heard that they actually can go through a dishwasher with the cork bottom. I don't know how long, but probably hand wash. I'll just go in reverse through this. I wanted to start off by recognizing some exceptionally kind people in helping the ACC. In your packet, you'll see one of the last items I mentioned was Mr. Matt Lee, who, aside with everything else that's gone on through donations to his department this year, he grabbed the ball and ran with it. And at the moment, he's hustled up close to $30,000 in scholarship money to be handed out for students who either want to go into engineering or into the machining trades. And so that, that money is now sitting with both the, well, the other side of my job, Sharafy, and also the ACC side. And so I wanted to thank Emmy Carney here at LP, who graciously shared one of LP's documents for putting together a process for awarding them. And I also have our, some of our partner school counselors who will be sitting on a committee to help formulate the process for doing that. Our hope is to get it out this summer to some of those students who just currently graduated to be able to participate in that. The, the renewable grants that come up every two years. And based upon us being about the only one in the region that has something like that, I foresee it being able to be renewed continuously. So hopefully, it'll address some of the need the area has and help students be able to pay for college. We can award up to $2,500 per student. So it looks to be a very nice thing. Mr. Lee did some nice work in getting that. I also wanted to thank Mr. Baker. As you've probably seen some of his blasts, we're getting ready for what we call our Summer Showcase, where we have the pre, the middle school students come in to experience what the ACC offers and what CTE offers them. Currently, we have registrations from 17 different schools. And we're 50% above last year's registration, closing in on 100 students to come here. We're hoping for more, we can take more. But Jeanette Maurice, who's one of my assistants, has been phenomenal with getting that going the past three years. Now that we're out of COVID and aside from some competition from sports camps, I think we're doing very well with getting kids to come over here and see what these things are all about. Other than that, within your thing, I just wanted to recognize the Fire Science Department and our, again, everyone from Mrs. Cushing to our other principals in the ACC for allowing them to put on a food drive to help. They own a food pantry. They did a nice community service project with that. And our welding students did exceptionally well over at IBCC and one of their first annual welding competitions. We took a first, a second, and a third between the things that they went into. So I'm very proud of the kids and what they did in there. And then lastly, we're looking at, again, thanking our community partners that we have with, in this case, Vector, the Ogilvy Fires Department, and the LP Counseling Department here. Our kids are focused this year at the ACC was on soft skills. Every employer tells us, we need kids that can do soft skills. We'll train them for other things, but get them to be able to do and want to work. And so LP's Guidance Department, when they have their CAVS Connect showcase, they graciously invited all the other schools to come with the ACC kids to participate in that. So we're very thankful that all of them got, to put their skills to use. They've been practicing those things like interviewing skills and resume building with the community partners from the business area. And then LP got them over here to actually put it to use for real. So again, thank you for all of those people that helped us. That's the report. If anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Director of Communications, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. Well, as it started getting brought up, one of the big projects that's going to be on the horizon is that migration to the new website vendor. It was really just a matter of one large company bought out another large company. And we have to change the things around. But I talked with them, it looks like there's going to be some, some good positives that'll come out of it. Just a little bit of extra work this summer as we redesign. But it's always a good opportunity to look at what we're doing and how it can be improved. So we're looking forward to that. And aside from that, really, the fun stuff lately is, it's at the end of the year, so there's all, all the great activities happening in the building. And I've been able to kind of put a finger in, in a few of those pies. And it's really been great. Counseling Department's done a great job with their Decision Day, really giving every senior who's graduating an opportunity to talk about what their future plans are. A nice feature to put on social media and a couple of other things to really showcase. Our students, not only those who are college-bound or the future college student athletes, but also those who are going to the workforce, military, other vocations. Really show off all, all the opportunities that can come out of LP Education. Some other great pieces, working with our freshman English classes. I helped them with Mr. McCauley's group on creating a kind of a student newspaper where they interviewed dozens of people around the building and, and told their stories and really neat stuff. That's, was, we shared out on social media, if you caught that. We're always happy to share that. Lots of great things with a number of our programs. Also, as I see Mrs. Sherry DePape from the Foundation is here. Just want to mention, as Dr. Robleski talked about, Teacher Appreciation Week last week. One of the great things the Foundation has done the past couple of years is hosting a cookout on, on the Friday of that week for all the faculty and staff. They bring in all the food. We get the grill out, thanks to our maintenance staff for setting all of that up. Mr. Teeman and I ran the grill for a few hours, got a little smoky, but avoided the rain. And yeah, a really nice treat for everybody in the building. And then one last piece, Mrs. Viva is right here. I know we're going to be talking about the Herbelsheimer Alumni Room quite a bit shortly. But I really can't thank Mrs. Viva and Mrs. Brigagna enough. Just in the past four weeks, the amount of work they put into helping Dr. Robleski and I kind of get that room set up. We had a lot of artifacts and materials ready to go in the room, and they really found a way to display them and make it look great. So they really deserve a lot of kudos for that. That's all. Unless you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. On the new business, 10.1, we have a resolution to read. LaSalle-Pru-Tonship High School District 120 Resolution. Be it resolved by the Board of Education, School District Number 120, County Council LaSalle and Bureau, State of Illinois as follows. Whereas, the Board of Education values the history and reputation of LaSalle-Pru-Tonship High School and takes great care to determine whether any room or facility shall be named in honor of an individual or family. And whereas, Mr. George L. Herbelsheimer III, LP Class of 1929, honorably represented the LaSalle-Pru community for 57 years as a co-founding member of the Herbelsheimer, Lanin, Henson, Duncan, and Reagan law firm. Served our country with distinction during World War II. Improved our community through his dedication to serve others and faithfully guided LP High School as school attorney. And whereas, Dr. Henrietta M. Herbelsheimer, LP Class 1930, improved countless lives through her service as a medical doctor, serving as Chief of Maternal and Child Hygiene Division of the Illinois State Department of Health, and educated a generation of physicians as a University of Chicago professor and a prolific writer for many medical journals. And whereas, the Herbelsheimer children wished to honor their early education George and Henrietta received at LP High School. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Room 237 shall now and forever be named the Herbelsheimer Alumni Room, to serve as an inspiration to those using this space. And be it further resolved that this resolution be incorporated into the minutes of a permanent record, a copy displayed in the Herbelsheimer Alumni Room, and that the original be presented to the Herbelsheimer, Herbelsheimer family with deep appreciation for their generosity making this room possible, adopted the 17th day of May, 2023. I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution renaming the Alumni Conference Room to the Herbelsheimer Alumni Room.
Second.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to express on behalf of the, the board and the administration what a joy it has been working, if I may, with Larry and Bob over the course of really the last year plus, as we've had conversations. And I've appreciated the, the incredible support and generosity of the entire family. And it's, it's been a pleasure to meet in person. I know that we had a Zoom meeting where we had a chance to, to, to meet other members of the family. I also want to recognize Mike Kmetz, our district architect. He sends his regrets, his son, his son's band concert is tonight. So he's where he is supposed to be this evening. But he wanted me to personally express his gratitude to the Herbelsheimer family and the, for having the opportunity to be able to work with the family on the design of the room. Lee Park Construction Company was the firm from Ottawa that won the bid for the construction of the room. And we just can't wait to, to, to show it to you. I've shared pictures, up to a point, with the family, to where you've seen the, the cases, casework and whatnot. And we can't wait at the conclusion of our open session to come down to the room to have the formal ribbon cutting ceremony and for you to hopefully be as overjoyed as we are and overwhelmed with the, the outcome of, of the room. So I want, I want to thank you very much.
Do we have time to?
Absolutely.
You, microphone is yours.
Well, thank you. I first of all, want to say how honored we are to be here and to, to provide this room to you all. And I wanted to acknowledge some of my siblings. And I'm first going to start with Carolyn Bowman. Can't stand up, Carolyn. So people, she's the shyest of the bunch. And then George Herbelsheimer, George, you can do it.
I can do it. More than her.
And Bob Herbelsheimer, my brother. And, and with us also is Lynn Herbelsheimer, George's wife, who was a student here for two years. And then her family moved away. But we're honored to be here with you all, and we are grateful. And, you know, I, I don't know if you realize that we had a foundation set up in which we gave scholarships to many deserving young students that were going off to college and universities. And I, I guess as we age, and you can see that we are aging well, some of us are not aging as well. But we felt it was kind of important to kind of bring it into the foundation and see how those funds could be used in some different way. And so we were introduced to this remarkable guy at the end of the table, Dr. Robleski, who every time I talked to you, I came away thinking, I wish I could be like you. He was so full of enthusiasm and positivity and, and brilliance, really, to come up with the idea of the Alumni, Alumni Room. And, you know, just made it a miracle that came true for us. And we just wanted to thank you as much. And he's a real gem, I'll tell you. Don't let him get away. So that's what I wanted to say, and thank you so very much. And anybody else want? Nope? That's all you're going to get.
Well, thank you very much. On the new business, I need a motion for approval of the authorized public display, the FY 2023 amended district budget.
So moved.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the purchase of 2021 Chevy Traverse in Cornet, approved for $38,467.26. $35,532.26 is the total cost, and $2,0935 is the warranty.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion of approval for the following 2023, 2024 technology purchases of $487,542.34.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of five-year agreement with Final Site, which replaces Blackboard for the website and all call services. Blackboard, for the website and all call services, for eighty-two thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the Higher Lutinsky Cement Finishing Company to complete stadium step threads and wall patching repairs for thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
So moved.
Second. Is that Dr. Lynch? I'm sorry. Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the award of contracts and following bidders for athletics, sports complex, support building rebid of one million seven hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, the base bid A for the concession stand and press box, the Visoring Construction Company for one million five hundred and seventeen thousand thirty-four dollars, and the base bid B for the soccer building bathroom addition, the Teeman Builders, for two hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need approval to award contracts for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, Pizza, Pizza Hut, Milk and Dairy, Prairie Farms, and Bread Alpha Baking.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval to submit the building permit applications for the following summer twenty twenty-three projects, A, auto shop abatement, windows, and overhead doors, B, main building entrance door replacement, and C, nurse's office renovation.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the final twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three district calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the IHSA renewal for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the following requirements as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the following resignations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the recall of the following employees for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the rehire of the following positions for the twenty twenty-three,
twenty twenty-four school year as presented.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murlock?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.